I'll call to order the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education meeting for August 19th, 2025. I will invite all members of the Board, Administration, and Community to stand at attention facing the flag with their right hand over their heart to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united states, and justice for all.
We'll start with just a brief President's Report. This is the first Board meeting of the school year. Of course, our responsibilities extend throughout the year, but as we begin the '25, '26 school year, we're excited for another great year. I know the teachers are excited for another great year. Students, probably less excited, but I know the parents are excited to send their students back to school. And I also want to reflect on the past year or two where we've really seen fantastic improvement across many facets in the district, particularly the academics have really done great, and I don't want to steal Matt and Renee's thunder, and we're limited to what we can say. I think we're embargoed on some things, but really, scores have just been fantastic. And so, that's attributable to the hard work of a number of people, foremost the teachers. So, I really want to give credit where credit is due for all of that hard work and success. Still plenty of work to do, but really, the trend is in an incredibly positive direction. The other thing I wanted to comment, just because it's a topic of some great interest amongst many people because it's been in the news lately, is that, as many people heard, there was recently some legislation passed in Springfield mandating mental health screenings in grades three through 12. There's a great deal of concern around that. I've talked to a number of parents. I share the concern. That is something that the district and the Board will look closely at because that hits close to home. We want to be very, very careful, or at least I do, in how much we allow schools to intrude upon mental health, and mental health should remain the responsibility of the gatekeepers of the parents, not the schools. So, we'll be keeping a close eye on that. Fortunately, that does not apply imminently, and we have plenty of time to study and work with the community and communicate whatever we need to do to comply with that legislation. With that, I will pass it along to Matt and Renee for the Administration report.
Thanks, Mark. And a quick touch on that last topic that you brought up, and thank you for doing so. Excuse me. Remember that the legislation does not go into effect till next school year, so we have a year or two process and to look at everything that is, that will be coming around the mental health screener. And then, if you remember, both districts have worked diligently to make sure that there are opt-out provisions wherever possible to make sure that control does still lie within the families, and we will make sure we do our due diligence to see what parameters are available to meet the individual family needs with regards to this new requirement. Tonight's, tonight's presentation covers a host of topics. The first one I have to spend a little, I get to spend a little time on, which is the Annual Shared Services Report for our new members. This is a report that is given annually on what the benefits are and what the cost would be if we were to ever separate. It's our commitment to the community to, on an annual basis, take a look at the, everything that goes into shared services and then communicate on why it is in the best interests of our districts. In fact, this was a huge conversation during my interview process about, is this something that the district should continue to do in, in spite of the fact, when I was hired, I think we were year 17, we are now in year 21. And upon concluding that initial analysis, it was an emphatic yes, we should stay shared services, and last year, we celebrated year 20. And here is the annual report that has followed based on that decision. So, the analysis looks at not, not how much we would save, or how much we're saving because we have done it for so long, it now looks at how much it would cost us to separate into different districts, and I'm going to explain that. So, the current shared service employee totals, or FTE, are 36.5 employees between both districts. And if we were to, I should also note that this number changes from month to month. So, what you look at right now is a timestamp of July 1st of 2025 acknowledging that there are some moving points, not wide shifting changes, but you should know that as we pull this data, it's from one specific day, and the numbers could fluctuate slightly, but not significantly. For example, we started out fiscal year '25 with 38.5, but due to our shared services model, we were able to reevaluate workloads and reduce to FTE, so the number is slightly lower than it was previously. It is our commitment to maximize efficiency. If we were to not be in a shared services agreement, we would have to separate in this way. We would need 23.5 FTE for 115 and 24.5 for 67. So, this is, it's not as clear-cut as one-for-one because there is some economy of scale. Maybe we wouldn't need two assistant supes. Maybe the super, the respective superintendent, if you had two superintendents, they would pull some of that workload. So, I want you to know that we just didn't double the number. There is some things, responsibilities that would shift if we were to separate from districts. The bottom line is, we would need an additional 11.5 employees to separate, and that translates to just under $1 million of increased costs in 115 and 781,000 or 782,000 for 67. While that doesn't sound like a lot on an annual basis, when you extrapolate that into a five-year forecast, there is $8.8 million between both districts that is being infused into other initiatives. So, because of our shared service agreement, we are able to offer a higher level of support and resources to our communities because of this longstanding agreement of shared services. There are no, for our new members, there was a study that was done prior to my arrival, there are no comparables to shared services across the country when they did the analysis. There are other shared service districts, but no, they were not able to find two districts of our resource level or wealth that were engaged in this type of cost-saving measure. It makes us especially unique, and sometimes from the outsiders, they don't, from the outside looking in, they don't know why. This is why that previous districts or previous bores entered in this type of agreement. I should go on that the shared service report is bigger than just FTE. Please remember that there is approximately $1 million in technology licensing and infrastructure, and there are other economy of scales contracts that we are able to negotiate at a lower rate because of negotiating for two districts as opposed to one. And then, lastly, for 67, there is no sole administration space dedicated to admin in our current agreement. Remember, 115 owns this building, and the shared service lives here. If we were to separate, we would have to recapture likely some of Deer Path where the administration suite was once located, or add in addition to another building, or take some space in an elementary. I assure you, we don't have any space anywhere, so we would have to relocate maybe the Cube or the Haskins and, and take some of that space back. I'm going to take a pause here. We are also going to issue a written report that gives a little bit more context to this slide deck. We embed this report annually in my superintendent's report, but we are going to be producing a written memo or report that we will be releasing to the community in a future 411 that kind of makes sure that there is a more thorough explanation for any community member. If a Board member gets questions, they would be able to point to this written report in addition to the slide deck and this, the tape of this presentation. Does anybody have any questions about the report?
Any questions about this before we move forward? Okay. Renee, I'll kick it to you.
Okay. Well, as we are gearing up for an exciting year, we've had some really wonderful work happening, collaborative work. This was an exciting new, it's in our inaugural tri-district retreat. In the past, we've met with District 67 and 115, but this year was the first year that we included 65. So, we were able to come together and spend two days together, setting our intentions and our shared work for the year. One of the really fascinating, I'd say, dives that we took into things was, we looked at the Deloitte business chemistry. I don't know if anyone's familiar with that, but we were able to really understand what was our workflow as leaders, how do we get things done, how do we understand our teammates and how they work so that we have a balanced team. We also took a dive into the six types of working genius, and we were led through those particular attributes through, from Tom Burton. These are very similar to the Gallup Strengths Finders, but in doing this, it helps us ensure that we have the most effective working teams that are rowing towards the same direction. Also, not in the slides, but just, we just today welcomed about 14 new certified staff to the district. We're really excited about this group of teachers. We have some incredibly talented people. They just spent the last two days with us. A huge shout-out to Amy Lombardi, who leads our mentor program and onboarded them with just incredible information to help support them. Also, to Mary Beth Souser and Sydney Campo, who are our administrative assistants helping this get off the ground.
Thanks, Renee. In the workshop, you heard about improvements that were happening at the DPM cafeteria. I couldn't be more excited about this. If you remember, I distinctly remember, I, the last interview that I had was in DPM for the superintendentcy, and I remember getting a tour and feeling a little underwhelmed in the cafeteria, and it was one of my personal goals that we were going to find a way to improve that space for our young people. And thanks to the generous donation of the Spirit, last year, we were able to, through their partnership, equip the space with new furniture, with a commitment to the Spirit that if they purchased the furniture, we would come back this summer and then subsequently next and improve that space from a physical lens. And I think that our faculty and our students are going to be wowed as they walk in for the first day of school with not only some renovated ADA-compliant restrooms that are beautiful, new grab-and-go areas, and a new flexible use space that will be, I think, used throughout the whole day. And the idea is, our vision is that space could be used all day for flexible learning opportunities, not just for the time in which lunches are being offered. We have a new graphic on the wall, which sounds simple, but it is not, because the building is an older building, and sometimes it looks a little drab, and we're trying to make sure it is full of life because we know our middle schoolers are never dull, so we want to make sure our walls match that. And this vinyl wall graphic is actually one of the things that I'm most excited about that, and it was getting installed today. So, I hope you like it as well. We celebrated Lake Forest Day. We're going back in time a little bit. We have been marching in the parade for the last two to three years, third year. Each year, we campaigned to have students walk with us, and it was a beautiful Lake Forest Day. I hope you were celebrating and you went to the, all of the festivities that were associated with it. We also had our inaugural Varsity Field Flix is what we're calling it, and we had 200 people show up at the end of July to watch Wicked Part One. It is not a short video, and that was a lesson learned. When you show a video to the community, pick one that's just a tad under three hours. It was a lesson for me. We're going to shoot for two hours or under. Not that it wasn't wonderful, it's just a long video. And additionally, we have, there's, Jordan worked his magic with his team. It is mono, mono stereo for the scoreboard, and Wicked, because of it being a musical, had seven, I think, seven-plus channels of sound that somehow they had to work their magic to level it out to one, and it actually sounded pretty darn good. So, we learned that musicals are a little bit more complex, and three-hour movies could be shorter. So, I am excited to announce that that was a success, and I was pleased with how many people showed up, that we are going to offer the next showing on Saturday, October 25th, weather permitting, of Hotel Transylvania. My children are excited. If you haven't seen it, come see us, and I think the kids will love it. It's certainly apropos of the season, the Halloween season. We're also doing cool things where, for homecoming, the students are having a, for the 90th anniversary, which I think is the next slide, our students at the high school are hosting a movie to kick off Homecoming Week of a movie from the 90s. So, we are trying to bring the community together and use that space for both 67 and 115. The 90th celebration is a big deal, just under the 100th. I think it's, it's going to be a pretty exciting time for us, and we're kicking it off Homecoming Week, as I said previously. I'd like to congratulate Nolan Olson, who designed, it was a community-wide campaign to pick the design for the 90th anniversary, and one of our students won it. We have the Homecoming Game on September 19th. We have a present from, on the, by Paul Bergman about Stanley Anderson, who designed the building, on the 20th. We have building tours on the 20th. We're having an all-alumni community parking, like, party, parking lot party, a little alliteration there for you, on Saturday at Gorton as well. It should be full of fun and excitement, and I'm hoping for cool pre-fall days is what I'm hoping, with no rain. I will kick it back over to Renee to talk a little bit about data.
Well, you know I have waited all year to talk about this. When we think about our academic achievement, all year, I'd been presenting to you on different benchmarks that we had, some of them being MAPS scores, where you're looking not necessarily at proficiency, but at percentiles, and we were feeling good about everything that we were doing, but you never know until you take that summative assessment. And in the world of education, the IAR is that summative assessment for us. That's the one that we take in the spring, almost near the end of the school year. So, what you're looking at right here is the overall, all subjects, math and ELA combined for our five different campuses, and we're looking at our ECRRA reporting on growth. And what they do is they look at your local growth model, those particular cohorts of students, how they have performed historically, and then they combine them to give you what they call a growth model. This is what I'm going to call for you, a trailer, a little sneak peek into what we'll have in the fall assessment report, and then the big report that you'll be seeing in November because these scores are embargoed. As we discussed, the state does not let us talk about them. We have the raw scores. We've uploaded them to ECRRA and to the state. This is ECRRA telling us what our growth looked like. Now, you've seen the different colors. Red is essentially, you're not achieving that expected growth. Yellow's just still not quite there. Green is expected growth, and then blue is higher than expected growth. So, what I would like to share with you is that we have seen unprecedented growth this year, unprecedented in the sense that it has never in this school district been at this level. These are not proficiency scores, but these, again, are the growth scores. So, what I would like to point out to you, though, if we look not only here, two standard deviations, oh, sorry, if you go back one, Dr. Montgomery, if you look up at the top where it says point, positive point 6.8 higher than expected growth, that's two standard deviations, higher than what expected growth is. And so, this is, again, for both math and ELA, and I will have more on this for you next month, but what I wanted to show you, and if you do go to the next slide, this is an exciting one. This is showing our underserved populations, or the populations that are at maybe a little bit more risk. And so, I don't know that we've ever seen all blue in each of those populations, whether there are multilingual learners, whether they are from, you know, whether you're looking at it from the ethnicity lens, students with IEPs, but this is telling us that our work is working. So, there are so many celebrations. If we look to the next slide, I believe Dr. Montgomery is going to talk about another huge celebration that just came in this weekend.
Yeah, I was thrilled because I get a paper newspaper at my house daily, and I get a couple delivered on Sunday to open the Chicago Tribune, which included the Chicago Magazine, which ranked the elementary schools. And in Lake County, Sheridan Elementary was number one, and Everett was number five. So, we had two on the top 10 list, and they even had a little drawing of Sheridan Elementary. So, the high school last year was number one in the high schools in the area, and I am over the moon excited. I have Jordan crunching some numbers. Here is how they calculated this, to see just where Sheridan Elementary lands with all of the districts in the counties that are represented. But this speaks to the incremental changes that we have worked on for the last four years and how we are continuing to see incredible successes, albeit not, I love how you said in your President's Report, like, there's still work to be done, you're darn straight there is, and we are continuing to strive for a state of continual improvement while celebrating when we come out on top. Because my expectation is and always will be that we should shoot for number one in everything that we are doing.
And Brittany just shared that there are 168 elementary schools in Lake County. Elementary middle.
168, and we were, Sheridan was one of, one of one. And I want to give a huge shout-out to Everett because them coming in at number five is something incredible as well, and they should be nodded for that. And then, while you don't see Cherokee on this, the data that you're, that you saw last year and this year of the improvement that's happening in Cherokee tells me that it will be on the list in future years. So, we are not shying away from where we're growing, singing praises where we can and celebrating, and then also saying, here's where we didn't hit the marker, here's where we're continuing to progress. So, I would leave you with that. Oh, I'm not leaving with that. I'm leaving you with Dr. Simmon talking about back-to-school dates.
Yes, we are coming close to this. Next Monday, we have all of our staff coming together for our opening day. We're going to welcome our staff back on the 25th, on Wednesday, August 27th. That's our first day of school for students in grades one through eight. And then, on Tuesday, September 2nd, if you are joining our earliest learners, you've got your first day of preschool. Wednesday, September 3rd and 4th, or excuse me, yeah, September 3rd and 4th, we have our first day of kindergarten. We stagger those starts, so parents will be receiving exactly which day they'll be attending shortly. And then, Friday, the 5th, is when we welcome all of our students, all of our kindergartners full day. Some other key things to keep in mind, we've got the parent information night on September 4th for Cherokee, Everett, and Sheridan, and then DPM will have that back-to-school night on September 18th. And looking very far ahead, we've got winter break coming up in December 22nd.
Not quite sure why we put that in there, but I am excited. Have something to look forward to. I wanted to also remind the Board members that we cordially invited you to next week's convocation, if you're available. It is Monday morning at a time that I'm sure was in an update.
Tomorrow's convocation?
No, Monday's.
Oh, Monday's convocation, yes. I'm thinking, what convocation is tomorrow?
Does it start at 8:00 or 8:30?
It's Monday. If you would like to join us, Mark will be kicking us off at 8 o'clock, and then Dr. Montgomery will join us at about 9:00, 9:30 after he kicks off the high school.
Yeah, so both convocations are happening on the, on the 25th, so I start at 1:00 and then move to the 2nd. So, I'm starting at the high school and then finishing, largely because Dr. Simmon has festivities for the beginning that I'll unfortunately miss because I'll be at the high school. Good luck, Mr. Remus.
I've been promised there are no lays this year.
There are not. Wait till you see.
That concludes our report, and thank you so much for your kind attention. If you have any questions, Renee and I will be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the Board, from Matt or Renee? All right. We now have an opportunity for public participation. This is the first opportunity, which is limited to only items listed on this evening's agenda. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we will move on to the Liaison Reports. Greg, anything to report on True North? We discussed it at length during workshop. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing beyond what we discussed in workshop.
I do not have any legislative updates. Monica, anything from APT?
I don't have a report, but their kickoff will be September 11th at Croya. I think it's at 9 o'clock, so all are welcome to that.
Great. Moving on to the action items. First up is approval of the 2025-2026 tentative budget. May I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 tentative budget, please?
They're moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Before you, just to remind the community, the full budget will be presented on, at the September meeting, and there will be a presentation that goes through it. This is to put it on display where any community members might have questions ahead of that final presentation in September.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items listed in the agenda?
They're moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's one item I just wanted to correct. It's item number seven in the minutes. It indicates that an absent member seconded the motion to adjourn. It's not substantive, but in the interest of accuracy, I think it should be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll make sure it gets addressed.
A question regarding item five, which is the Liberté Educational Consulting Agreement. Can somebody give some background on what that agreement is and the purpose? Is that something Phil might be able to draw?
Yamale, these are some of the, I guess you would say, outside consultants that are helping support us with the co-teaching model. That's one of our DSS goals, our Department of Student Services goal, that we're looking to, again, you just saw a lot of blue in terms of closing that gap. They are taking us to another level so that we can continue to see that growth and the co-teaching with Yamale and the team. They're truly just providing a lot of professional development for the general education classroom teams with the learning behavior specialists. They're helping us stay within compliance with special education law, as well as our best instructional practices, kind of combining those two. So, that's who Yamale and this group is.
Do we expect that that's something where they, they help us, we learn, and then move forward without them, or is this going to be an annual thing where we're bringing them in every single year, year after year?
Yeah, great question. This is currently what we're anticipating as a this year's focus, and then it's a little bit of a train-the-trainer model, if you will. We're training all of the necessary people this year. Eventually, this will probably go into our new staff orientation, just everything that we were training our new staff on now, we were trained by someone before, so it will, it's a model that will grow internally.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
I do have one on the same one. My math is not good, but it seemed like it's 13 days of co-teaching or coaching or consulting, and in my head, that's about a $4,000 per day fee. That, I've hired business coaches before, and especially when you hire them for 13 days, that's a very high daily fee. Did I calculate that wrong?
Well, $14,000 a day when you're actually looking at bringing, I'm sorry, $4,000 a day is probably what people will charge in the world of education, as sad as it is. I don't know if it's just education, if you're saying that you can find business coaches that are less, this is probably not even, Dr. Montgomery, please correct me if I'm wrong, that's not even at the higher end.
We're seeing consultants running anywhere between $8,000 and $10,000 a day. So, I was, as much as it sound, I was pleased with the rate in which they were offering.
A good question.
Wish I had better news, but I shouldn't be excited about it, but I was happy with that rate.
I'm in the wrong profession, number seven, I think that's, seven's interpreted, no, it's number two, sorry, the interprint, interprinted contract, I think there was no pricing attached to the document, I assume it's good, but it refers to an Exhibit A in pricing, but there's no pricing in the document.
We can ask Dr. Sterben to get that.
We will add that to the update.
You may have that.
Any other discussion or questions on the consent agenda? All right, may I have a roll-call vote on the consent agenda, please?
Ms. Yon?
Yes.
Mr. Berger?
Yes.
Mr. Remus?
Yes.
Mr. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Adamo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have had a number of outstanding FOIA requests, all of which have been completed at this point in time, and are available on the board website, at this point in time, the board will have a second opportunity for public comment, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Being done, just a couple final announcements, actually, I think Matt already covered all of these, Matt or Renee, and that is, we have school starting next week on August 27th, no school on September 1st, which is Labor Day, and the next Board of Education meeting is September 23rd, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest School District 67 Board Meeting for August 19th, 2025?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.